Call the meeting to order at 6:30. Can we get the quorum established?
Yes. Trustee Hag?
I'm here.
Trustee Lathan?
Here.
Trustee Lewis? Vice President Rocha?
Here.
President Hernandez?
Here. Next, we are going to move into closed session. We have two items on the agenda. A, public employment title interim slash acting superintendent. And B, public employee performance evaluation superintendent. We'll return back to open session at 7:00 PM.
The call of the meeting to order is at 6:30. Can we get the quorum established?
Yes. Trustee Hag?
I'm here.
Trustee Lathan?
Here.
Trustee Lewis?
Vice President Rocha?
Here.
President Hernandez?
Here.
Next, we are going to move into closed session. We have two items on the agenda. A, public employment title interim slash acting superintendent. And B, public employee performance evaluation superintendent. We'll return back to open session at 7:00 PM.
Call the meeting to order is at 6:30. Can we get the quorum established?
Yes. Trustee Hag?
I'm here.
Trustee Lathan?
Here.
Trustee Lewis?
Vice President Rocha?
Here.
President Hernandez?
Here.
Next, we are going to move into closed session. We have two items on the agenda. A, public employment title interim slash acting superintendent. And B, public employee performance evaluation superintendent. We'll return back to open session at 7:00 PM.
Call the meeting to order is at 6:30. Can we get the quorum established?
Yes. Trustee Hag?
I'm here.
Trustee Lathan?
Here.
Trustee Lewis?
Vice President Rocha?
Here.
President Hernandez?
Here.
Next, we are going to move into closed session. We have two items on the agenda. A, public employment title interim slash acting superintendent. And B, public employee performance evaluation superintendent. We'll return back to open session at 7:00 PM.
Call the meeting to order is at 6:30. Can we get the quorum established?
Yes. Trustee Hag?
I'm here.
Trustee Lathan?
Here.
Trustee Lewis?
Vice President Rocha?
Here.
President Hernandez?
Here.
Next, we are going to move into closed session. We have two items on the agenda. A, public employment title interim slash acting superintendent. And B, public employee performance evaluation superintendent. We'll return back to open session at 7:00 PM.
Call the meeting to order is at 6:30. Can we get the quorum established?
Yes. Trustee Hag?
I'm here.
Trustee Lathan?
Here.
Trustee Lewis?
Vice President Rocha?
Here.
President Hernandez?
Here.
Next, we are going to move into closed session. We have two items on the agenda. A, public employment title interim slash acting superintendent. And B, public employee performance evaluation superintendent. We'll return back to open session at 7:00 PM.
Call the meeting to order is at 6:30. Can we get the quorum established?
Yes. Trustee Hag?
I'm here.
Trustee Lathan?
Here.
Trustee Lewis?
Vice President Rocha?
Here.
President Hernandez?
Here.
Next, we are going to move into closed session. We have two items on the agenda. A, public employment title interim slash acting superintendent. And B, public employee performance evaluation superintendent. We'll return back to open session at 7:00 PM.
Call the meeting to order is at 6:30. Can we get the quorum established?
Yes. Trustee Hag?
I'm here.
Trustee Lathan?
Here.
Trustee Lewis?
Vice President Rocha?
Here.
President Hernandez?
Here.
Next, we are going to move into closed session. We have two items on the agenda. A, public employment title interim slash acting superintendent. And B, public employee performance evaluation superintendent. We'll return back to open session at 7:00 PM.
Call the meeting to order is at 6:30. Can we get the quorum established?
Yes. Trustee Hag?
I'm here.
Trustee Lathan?
Here.
Trustee Lewis?
Vice President Rocha?
Here.
President Hernandez?
Here.
Next, we are going to move into closed session. We have two items on the agenda.[1789.89]
I'll call us back to open session at 7:02. Can we get the quorum reestablished?
Trustee Hack.
Here.
Trustee Lathan.
Here.
Trustee Lewis. Vice President Rocha.
Here.
President Hernandez.
Here. Next, we have 3B reports from closed session. There are none. 3C flag salute. I will lead us in the flag salute.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have four recognitions. We have item A, Dozier Libby Medical High School valedictorian, Belinda Reyes Baradas.
Yes, good evening, Board President. We want to recognize Belinda Reyes Baradas, who graduated as a valedictorian. Belinda, can you please stand up, please? She's here tonight with us. She is the valedictorian, yes, of Dozier Libby Medical High School on June 6th, earning the top rank out of 154 students with an impressive 4.4 GPA. She received, yes, yes, excellent. She received the Dozier Libby Medical High School Seal of Excellence, the State Seal of Bilinguism, and the Seal of Civic Engagement. This fall, Belinda will attend UC Berkeley, where she plans to major in bioengineering. Proud of her Mexican-American heritage, Belinda is also honored to be a first-generation college student. And while I, and several of us, were at that Dozier Libby Medical High School valid, graduation, through the process, there was a remiss, and we were unable, we didn't recognize you. And from my own self, I apologize for missing that opportunity to recognize you there. I believe it was of no fault or intended slight for you. And our Associate Superintendent Ms. Abara, I don't know if you have some other things to recognize Belinda about or share with us.
I think you stole my thunder, but we do want to acknowledge and give our appreciation for you being here tonight. Another apology for us missing that at the ceremony and presenting you with not only a certificate of recognition signed by Board President Antonio Hernandez and our superintendent, as well as a plaque.
Great. Moving on to five superintendent reports.
Yes, good evening. Tonight, I'll make it pretty short and sweet, but I did want to recognize our certificated human resources department, who at this point, while we're in the initial throes of the first weeks of summer, have already hired 90 new certificated employees to the district for 2024-25 school year. Another 15 of our certificated individuals are transferring to different sites. Sometimes that happens, where they want to try their hand at a different grade level or a different skill level, so we're having that occur. And we want to make sure that people know that we're having a recruitment and hiring fair on July 9th at Prospects High School from 12 o'clock to 5 o'clock. We'll also have representatives from local universities to support individuals who are considering joining our teachers of scholars. And so the information will be available to help support people's goals of becoming teachers. It's a tough process out there in recruiting through all of California, but we want to help people who choose to work in this field get the degrees, get the credentials, get the support and training, so we can help them become part of our collaborative efforts. At the fair, we'll be signing well-qualified individuals to contracts for next year. So again, there's information on our website and our social media. We accept all years of service to those listening out there who may be teachers and considering another district, all years of service, so you can get full service for your credits towards salary. We are focused on special education teachers, including school psychologists, speech pathologists, and we have bonuses for specific areas in the area of special education, those providing service to students, and our dual immersion programs. Sorry, one more time. July 9th, 12 o'clock to 5 o'clock, the human resources team will be there, principals will be there, university supports will be there. Come and get a teaching job and join us. Thank you.
Next, we have six school reports. We have none. Seven, public comments, A, individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from the public. We have Bob Sanchez.
Good evening, Board of Directors, district staff, and the community. My name is Bob Sanchez. I'm a longtime resident of Antioch City. I went to school here. I went to Fremont. I went to Antioch Junior High and Antioch High School. I've raised six children who went through all the schools also, and have graduated through college and have successful careers. So Antioch has been well, and Antioch School District has been well for me. Five years ago today, I retired from Antioch Unified School District after 30 years of service, my anniversary. And unfortunately, on the next day, I had the first of three surgeries on my ankle. So it's been a good retirement so far. I've been to many board meetings when I worked here, and I've been watching them since I've been retired. I've disappointed because the meetings have gone from focusing on what's best for our students and our schools to disrespect full negative comments directed towards staff and our superintendents. It's difficult to witness this, and my hope is we can get back into respectful, productive meeting support in each other. I have known Stephanie Anella for over 25 years. She was a substitute teacher at Park, and I told the principal at that time, Rachel Zinn, we need to hire her. She's a keeper. We did. She became an English teacher. Excuse me. She was an excellent teacher, connected with her students and staff and parents. She became the vice principal, and then Antioch Middle School's principal. Through her leadership at Antioch Middle School, academic achievement improved and suspensions and behavior issues decreased. She moved into district administration and ultimately became superintendent. Under her helm, we established many programs to help our students. Her priorities have been student achievement and social, emotional well-being. Some of the programs, to name a few, are Toolbox, PBIS, wellness rooms, mental health support. We brought back counselors and music programs, restorative practices at all schools, brought our district to county health buses, and many, many more. Two of our schools are dual immersion schools, which have been extremely popular. Once the pandemic hit, she led the district through uncharted territory and into virtual learning. Those two years were extremely challenging to students and staff and parents. We pulled through it, and now we're back into in-person learning. Through her vision, she saw the need for a virtual learning school and established Thomas Gaines, an online virtual school. Our district has been through many budget crises, but we still remain physically sound. Stephanie has faced numerous challenges, which she carefully navigates for positive outcomes. We teach our students to handle differences respectfully through communication and positive dialogue. We need to be role models for our young people, and that starts at the board.
Thank you.
Can I just say one more sentence?
Sure.
I'm proud to have been a teacher, principal, and a district employee for over 30 years, and I'm proud to have the pleasure and honor to work for and with Stephanie Anella. Have a good summer.
Next, we have 7B, individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from district employees. We have none. Moving on to eight district reports, A, 2024-25 local performance indicator self-reflection. Okay.
I was waiting for comments.
All right. Good evening, Board. So part of our California dashboard, so we know that the State Board of Education has eight priorities that they have approved, and the California school dashboard, it covers many of those through our testing and data that we share with them, but there are some priorities that we have to create a, or develop a self-reflection that we then submit to the California dashboard. And so those I'm going to share with you this evening, they're not here for approval, but for your information. So the ones that we will, there goes, went too fast. The ones that we'll be focusing on this evening are these. So looking at teachers' curriculum and facilities, state academic standards, parent and family engagement, school climate, and our broad course of study. Starting with the priority number one, making sure that we have appropriately assigned teachers, access to all of the curriculum, as well as our facilities being functional, safe, and clean. So this is the portion of the report that reflects that. And so if you'll see at the top is the one focused on teachers. So mind you, this is kind of, the data that we pull is from the year prior. And so this is what was reported, 733.4 teachers, 83.2 of them are cleared, 5.4% of them were out of field, 2.5 were interns, 4.9 labeled as ineffective, 3.8 are incomplete. That's referring to some of the credentialing. And then there's a .3 that there were some unknown pieces. When it comes to the instructional materials that everybody had, there were no schools or students without the core instructional materials, and our facilities were in good repair. Priority two, focused on the implementation of state academic standards. So this includes our assessments, curriculum, access to curriculum, instruction, and professional development. And I'm just going to briefly go over the rating scale that is used for these next few sections. So one being that we would say that we're in exploration and research phase, two, beginning development, three, initial implementation, four, full implementation, five, full implementation and sustainability. So looking at these areas, starting with professional development, that we have this as an area of need, and that is part of what we will be, some of the items that will be on the agenda for tonight, of how we are going to improve the professional development. And this is including all core subject areas, which also includes English language development. Instructional materials, as I mentioned, we have all of those. And then collaboration, walkthroughs, and mentoring, we had ranked ourselves as a three. It's emerging. Our principals were engaged in walkthroughs over the course of this year, and our goal is to expand that, not only to principals and vice principals, but also at the school local level, and including teachers, teachers to be able to go into each other's classrooms. And then the last two areas, specific to CTE, career technical education, health, PE, physical education, VAPA, visual and performing arts, and language, and then teacher support. Under priority three, parent involvement and family engagement, ratings of building relationships, building partnerships, and seeking input. So it can be everything from parent-teacher conferences and how we work with our families to inform them of how their students are doing, as well as holding all of our parent organization meetings, not only at the school site, but at the district level. Priority six is focused on school climate. For this, a big portion of what we look at is the California Healthy Kids Survey. Again, this is from 2022-2023 school year. We do not have this current past year's data yet. And I hope that you can see this. It's very small in our print. I think you can see it pretty good. What I did is I actually took it from the California Healthy Kids Survey, and I looked at areas specific to school climate. So looking at first, school connectedness. It breaks down. So we had seventh graders, ninth graders, and 11th graders take this survey. I shared the one broken down by student groups. So it gives you some indicate, some indication of where students are feeling that they're connected to school consistently across the grades. The next one is focused on caring adults, again, broken down by student groups. Next one is having high expectations for our students, that they felt that they, that the adults at the school had high expectations for them. And this is the data. And the last one that I pulled for this presentation was around academic motivation. The next area that we have to submit is priority seven, focused on the access to a broad course of study. And these are some of the things that I know, that I noted for this presentation. So our advanced placement courses, our linked learning and career technical education courses, project-based learning, the seal of bilinguism, and AVID. So this information will be submitted, I want to say by July 1st, or the end of this month, to our California State Dashboard. month, to our California State Dashboard. And so I'm just sharing that with you this evening, so you know what's being submitted.
Looks very good.
Thank you.
Any questions? Yeah, Trustee Lewis?
Just one quick question. So I know that this is pulled from the year prior, so 2022-23, correct? Do we know what these numbers look like yet at this point? Do we know how these numbers compare to the state average, or any other?
I did not pull that one, because the report doesn't ask for that.
Got it.
They're just looking for our local data, and then they'll put it into the dashboard, and I think from there, we can do comparison.
And all of this is self-report?
Yes, yeah. These are the areas that don't, aren't specifically in the LCAP in this way.
Got it. And so for public consumption, you know, for folks who may not be familiar with LCFF, can you give us just a quick description of what Local Control Funding Formula refers to?
So that's going to come in the LCAP piece, because this is just a piece of it, but it is, and Liz could probably help me with that more so than me.
Well, you have the Local Control Funding Formula, which is the way the revenue comes in for our students, that's tied to also the LCAP, which is the Accountability Plan. So some of the funding that comes in through LCFF is specific, less you, is specific to funding and apply to the Accountability Plan, and the plan was presented last weekend, or last board meeting.
Last week.
Thank you.
Vice President Rocha, any questions?
No.
Great. Trustee Lathan, any questions, comments?
Thank you, Ms. Hibaara, for the presentation. This question may be for you or Ms. Carrie Wells of Human Resources, but for the report on progress, teaching certificated staff, we have 4.9% ineffective, 3.8% incomplete, 5.4% out of field. Can you explain what each of those categories means, please? Thank you.
I actually have the definitions here, if that helps you. Okay. I pulled those because this was a new way of reporting it this year, which was different from last. So ineffective is defined as indicating that one or more attributes of the assignment had no legal authorization for a permit, credential, or waiver, or one or more attributes of the assignment were authorized by the following limited permits: provisional internship permits, short-term staff permits, variable term waivers, substitute permits, or teaching permits for statutory leave.
Can I get clarification? So sometimes during board meetings, we'll do approval of teachers to teach out of their credential area, right? Is that where that ineffective comes from, or is that a different definition?
I think that one is more for the students that are, or the students, the teachers that are out of field.
Okay.
That's referring to those, that group.
Okay, I'm not, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
I'm still not clear what ineffective is, though.
I know it's not the way I think of it, but that's what, that's how they're defining it.
If I could, it just, we oftentimes think of ineffective in evaluative mode.
Right.
Somebody was ineffective.
It's not what this is.
That is not. It's a descriptor used by the state in this arena to describe that not 100% of your teachers are fully credentialed in every area that they're teaching. For a teacher assignment, I may have two classes of social science, two classes of English, and if there's a missing part of that assignment, then they will consider the entire assignment ineffective. So it's kind of a catch-all that a teacher may not have every single certification or fully credentialed in their full assignment.
So for example, when we approve people, I'm trying not to get the out of field, but if they're, no, not if they're intern, because it says here...
No, they could have short-term staff permits or waivers for certain criteria, that again, one part of our structure, the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing, says they are allowed to be in the classroom with that a waiver or approval from the governing board, but another part of our system will say they're not fully credentialed. That's making them ineffective per this particular report, if that helps.
That does help, and I'd imagine we don't want that, correct? Like in the best world?
It would be awesome to have 100% fully credentialed and every assignment tracked perfectly, but then we need, again, more teachers through the programs and the certifications. Yes, that would be the goal, full 100%, and unfortunately, everyone is struggling at this point, yes.
Thank you.
Great. And we do have a public comment on this item from, hopefully I'm reading this right, but is it Deborah Vincent?
Yes. Thank you. Good evening, Board President, VP, Board members. So I had a question about the data. Is this reprinted somewhere so I could see the details? Because I, on this report, I was looking for the breakdown, the other percentages, I believe we're talking about the LCFF. Are we talking about that, the self-report?
The self-reflection tool.
Yeah.
It's the local indicators.
Okay.
And it's attached to the board agenda.
So I can find it online?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. And the next question I had is, you know, obviously I'm interested in American Indian students, that is my heritage, both Cherokee and Choctaw, and so I didn't see any data for that. And I know typically, American Indian students, the percentage for how many attend school is low, but when you did the study, I didn't see any...
The study, it only reports on students that actually took the survey.
Right.
So if they didn't have enough American Indian students take the survey, they wouldn't have numbers. I think they had to have at least 15 students to take it in order for them to get a score.
Okay.
Yeah.
Interesting. And the other question is, any special needs details, any students, anything about that in part, as a part of the self-reflection, any students with disabilities, any?
It doesn't call for that.
Okay. But at some point, that will be, I'm hoping that will be looked at, because, you know, in terms of education, skill.
It's definitely in the LCAP itself, but not in this particular.
Not in this survey?
Yes.
Is anything going to be forthcoming for this survey in terms of, like I said, I know the, some of the percentages for American Indian students, it's not going to be that high, but just, you know, some of that data would be relevant if they're not showing up.
Right. It's in the California Healthy Kids Survey, so it really depends on the students that take this.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Any comments or questions, Trustee Heck?
No.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Trustee Lewis.
So thinking about Dr. Lathan's line of question, can I ask just sort of a clarifying question? So that 4.9% ineffective, that's of the total population of teachers, 4.9% of teachers are ineffective, or is it 4.9% of the credentials that are available?
4.9 of the teachers.
Got it.
That we have.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a few questions. So when coming up with some of these self-reflection scores, who was part of determining, like, what these scores were?
The Educational Services Team.
Okay, and then that was consistent across all of the different measures where there was a self-reflection piece?
Yes.
Okay. And to what extent do we, I understand that this is a self-reflection tool, but at what point do we kind of compare this self-reflection to what the community, what parents or students might think, and whether our own, you know, how do we evaluate our own self-reflection of that?
So that came through with the parent survey that we did through LCAP. This was separate from that.
Got it. And do we feel that, that I guess our self-reflection is consistent with the kind of feedback we were getting from parents and the community?
I think it did appear in the one that we received from the LCAP, yes. Some of the areas that showed up as low for us were also, and we took that as, that feedback that we have received from parents, whether it's at a parent meeting or so forth, to use to determine some of these scores.
Got it. And then I think the last more logistical, technical piece, I don't think we actually do have this PowerPoint attached to the Agenda Board Doc item, we have the actual...
The document itself.
The document, yeah.
Yes. It was a late answer, we'll add that in for sure.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you so much, really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Moving on to nine hearings, we have none, 10 public presentations, we have none, and 11 consent items. Are there any items that trustees want to pull or talk about separately or have comments on?
Yes, I want to pull 11X, which is Services Agreement with Solution Tree for 24-25.
Great. And do you have comments, or is that for a separate vote, or?
Both, and I express my concern to Ms. Hibaara already, but one of my concerns, besides the price tag of this contract, which is over $1 million, I think is more of the timeline, excuse me, of three years working with Solution Tree. I completely respect Solution Tree, they're an organization that works a lot with teachers and principals. They have lots of great folks who have written books that contribute to Solution Tree, and they're really, are known for like their professional learning communities, which I respect that structure. One of my concerns is the lack of, how do I say this, depth that the organization goes with staff, and so I'm just really wondering why the selection of this organization to address the equity audits, which is deeper work, to actually go through transformational change, and then also why three years with Solution Tree?
We felt that, let me start with the three-year piece of it, that this needed to be something that was ongoing, so that part of what we learn through the equity audits is that we have a lot of areas that we need to work on, and it can't be done in one year. And so that was our intent, was to identify areas of focus for each year, and then to be able to dig in more deeply. We also wanted to go with an organization that could reach all of our teachers. Not all of our teachers can leave school and go to a conference, but if we can bring those professionals and those lead associates to our district, then we could reach all of our teachers and administrators here in our district, and that would be a cost savings, because when you go to a conference, it's much more, plus you can't leave school, substitutes, there's so many hurdles or barriers to allow our entire staff to participate. Another piece in how we identified this is some of our principals and district administrators had started to attend some of the institutes, are the RTI MTSS, as well as the PLC institutes, and they came back on fire, they're already implementing. And so they have, in their opinion, and in the experience of many of us in the district that have been to Solution Tree, they feel like they come away with things that they can put into practice immediately, and they also walk away feeling highly motivated to do the work.
Okay. I just...
And they are ranked number one in the nation for professional development.
Yes, for professional development. And I also know that there are concerns, and again, I'm saying this as a person who actually respects their work, their structures of professional learning communities, but there have been studies that they have not helped people engage in transformational work. So there's a difference between structure, like I'm helping you understand how to run a PLC, and actually changing outcomes, helping to change outcomes for students. So that's my only concern. Is there a way, and will, would they be willing, and maybe this, I don't know, to do one year? So, and I know, I have a feeling, I know what you're going to say, oh, we can stop the contract at any time. But we read the contract, and it's not clear from my perspective, like if we stopped it, because it said one year or when the work is done. It would just be nice to have updates on the progress that is being made, instead of a three-year, like, done deal, because that's really concerning if we don't see the results. I know Arkansas stopped a contract with them because they've been millions and millions of dollars, and they didn't see any return on their investment in terms of changes in the classroom. So I just don't want to be in that position where we're paying over $1 million. I think we need to stop and evaluate what we're doing, so that, those are just my concerns. And again, I respect their PLC, I love professional learning communities, but I want to know how it's going to actually change teacher practice.
Trustee Amanda?
So that's it for me.
Trustee Lewis?
Can I have a follow-up to, what I'm understanding you to say is like sort of an evaluative tool to determine the forward, or the continuation of the contract?
Yes, after one year.
I think that's something that we can do, and I believe that it's worked in there, that we can, you know, I think within 30 days...
I think that's...
...terminate the contract if we're not pleased with the outcomes.
Okay. And so, you know, if that is possible, what would, who would determine the indicators? Would that be something we would do, would that be something the superintendent would do, like how would that be, how would that determine?
We will be looking, so we're going to be setting goals specific to this work, with specific actions, that things that we want to see in classrooms and implemented at the school site level as well, and we will be doing evaluations along the way, we'll be receiving it after each professional development that is provided on our staff development days, and in looking at student outcomes. Well, there will be, there will be artifacts that will be collected along the way to ensure that the work is getting done and being implemented as well.
Clarification, because I know that the contract, at least as far as the AUSD Services Agreement, right now has an effective date of 8/24 and then a termination date of 6/10/25. Are we approving a three-year contract or a year of this contract?
That, I believe it's a year, but it's a three-year, it's a three-year plan of what we would like to see each, each year.
Got it. So we will then be seeing this contract come back for, I guess, an extension in year two and then in year three?
Yes.
And just for, were you finished? I want to piggyback on that. So the one, excuse me, the, what is the $1 million for?
That's for the full three years.
Okay.
Yes, and so it's broken down by each year what that would be.
I do have another question, but I don't know if you were finished.
Yeah, I'm done with, yeah.
What is the capacity building of the staff, of the district-level staff? Because I notice it looks like, and I may be a misunderstanding this, I'm not sure, that Solution Tree is doing all of the professional learning for the year.
Mm-hmm.
So what is, what is your team doing if they're doing what district administrators typically would be doing?
So there are other things that are happening as well. This part of their day is a half-day, and so we are also continuing to support our sites with what they are going to be doing in their portion of the day. There's also, you know, adoptions that are happening, trainings for other curriculum, trainings for special educations, training for counselors, dual immersion teachers. So all of that is continuing, and then our team specifically will be supporting in the implementation. So it's not just that they're going to come and walk away, we have to keep it going in the, in the time in which they are not here, giving professional development. Our duty is to carry it forward.
Any other questions? Any other items to pull or discuss or vote on differently? I have a few questions. For item 11B, Purchase Order Report, we do have a purchase order for Michael W. Burkholder for Media Services, and I'm wondering, what did we receive from that, what media services and advertisement?
Um, what was it? Oh, graduation advertisement.
Got it. And where was that advertised?
I believe on his, on his social media, or his Twitter page, I'm not sure.
Yeah, virtually, yeah.
So, so follow-up question, if another, if another paper, like the East Bay Times or something, was to mention AUSD graduating, will we be paying them?
If we, if we put an ad in. We do, we do use the East Bay Times.
He's doing our ads.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Or our announcements, or those kinds of things, I believe.
Got it. And then I had, I know I sent, we received an email with a number of questions. Can you walk us through 11D, the award bid for copier and printer equipment of services, and how we came to deciding on UBO Business Services over Conica, given, you know, that we've used them for a number of years and that they are the cheaper option?
So I'm going to defer to Chris, but Chris and his team did a fair and transparent process to go through, and in the packet is the RFP, and in the RFP, it talks about the criteria in which we evaluate each of the proposals. So in short, and in your packet, and I believe there's a new version of the rankings for you to review, and you can see the different categories in which they were ranked. So I'll let Chris elaborate a little bit more. So I'll let Chris elaborate a little bit more.
So we had 100 percentage points available to each score. 35% was based on pricing. 30% was service, maintenance, and training. 20% was based off of the system hardware, software offerings, kind of what they specked out. 10% of that was the implementation plan and the delivery that they provided in their RFP. And then 5% was based on future flexibility and design. We put as much as we could in the scoring sheet with that information for the pricing. If you got the lowest bid, you got the most points out of 35. And from there, you were given a percent of that based off the lowest bid. It's the same equation we use for E-rate. So the farther away you get, the less points you get in pricing. Service, maintenance, and training. We summarized and answered and ranked them in that same spreadsheet, in the ranking, scoring that we have there. UBO and Conica were ranked the highest. UBO was tied for first because they offered two-hour response times. And they support most of the adjacent school districts to us in the vicinity. Mount Diablo also speak pretty highly of their service and implementation and the cost that they were able to save. We didn't quantify that in the pricing piece, per se. And Conica was tied because they're our current company, and they've been satisfactory so far. The system hardware and software offering. Conica got less points. That put them into second place because the proposal did not meet the minimum specs that were in the RFP. It was 10% of the proposed machines were below the minimum requirements that were noted in the clarifying questions that we put on our website. We had other vendors ask, hey, can we do this amount? And we said, everything needs to be standardized to these specs. We also received a question trying to clarify that from Conica after our deadline for questions, asking, is it okay if we do less than 50? Obviously, we couldn't respond, to be fair to everyone. We received two different formats for pricing. UBO Global Office and Toshiba were à la carte. They said, here's our offering, you can do these pieces. Xerox Visual Edge and Canon. And Conica did complete proposals. Here's everything we got, here's our specs, you know, take it or leave it. If some of the quantities were off, we adjusted that pricing based on what was in there. For Conica's, their, their minimum specs in that overall quote built proposal were below the number that we wanted. So instead of throwing that out, to be fair to everyone, we just took points off of the system hardware, software offering. So it's, we just took that off of meeting our specs.
So instead of removing them because they didn't, they weren't in line with the specs, and they didn't meet the performance criteria, we just docked them a little bit. So I think Chris and his team did a thorough, you know, process of trying to evaluate them to minimize the bias on everybody and to give everybody a fair shot.
And then implementation, all but two scored max. They all had pretty decent plans. Flexibility, everyone was all max points.
Do we have any concerns about what's like, you know, approving this UBO business services in that transition process of now using a different vendor and different technology and different like workflows? And so like, does this kind of take that into account, I guess, in that implementation plan piece?
No, because either way, both companies are gonna replace machines. So it's the same process.
But I mean, I mean also like the intangible piece of like, you know, working relationships and things like that and those things.
No, otherwise, we would have scored them lower. But no, because we did, he did a thorough reference check as well.
Any questions from my fellow trustees? Next item for 11N, I know this is an extension of the contract. Is there any associated costs with that addendum there? It looks like no, but I just want to clarify. 11N ACIS.
Yeah, it's just, it's an addendum. So it's an additional, looks like an additional term? Yeah, it's extending the term.
Got it.
For one special education student.
Got it, with no additional.
No additional changes.
Great, and that's all of the questions that I have. Looks like we might need to vote on N and X separately?
I'm okay with X.
I'm okay with X as long as it's, we come back in one year before we move on. And then if we need to terminate, then we can.
Got it. So I'll go ahead and vote on N separately. So.
I, N, addendum to service agreement?
Oh, sorry, you're right. And on D, sorry, thank you. On item 11D separately, not N. Thank you.
You're separating D and N?
No, just D.
Just D?
So I make a motion to approve all consent items with the exception of item D?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Now we still have item D, so I'll entertain a motion to approve that, if someone wishes to do that.
I move approval of D.
All right, so it's been properly moved. Is there a second to approve the award bid for copier and printer equipment and services?
Second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded. Maya, can we do a roll call vote?
So before we get to roll call vote, can I hear your, like, your concerns, the concerns around, not your, but the concerns around this item?
Yeah, I'm just concerned about the cost and kind of the less tangible pieces around here in terms of working relationships that we have with people. I'm sure that our agreement with UBO Services and the process that we went through this is perfectly fine. But I don't think I can properly have my concerns addressed in time for us to kind of have a full discussion of that. And it sounds like the rest of the board is fine with this. And so it's more of where I stand with this.
Trustee Hag?
Oh, yes.
That's right. Trustee Lathan?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Rocha?
Yes.
President Hernandez?
No. Great, moving on to 12 action items. We have item 12A, 2024-25 Local Control Accountability Plan and Budget Overview for Parents.
I have that on, sorry about that. So a part of the local control funding formula, our district is required to adopt the local control accountability plan annually. This is, as I mentioned a couple of weeks ago at our last board meeting, three-year LCAPs. We are writing for 2024 to 2027. It focuses, as a reminder, it focuses on our low socioeconomic English learners and foster youth. And it is, the goals and actions within that plan are tied specifically to our supplemental and concentration dollars. So as I said, I reviewed all of those details on June 12 during the public hearing and took comments and questions. And at this point, I asked the board to vote in favor of approving our LCAP for 2024. It's technically 2024, 27, or 25, but it expands its three years. We're rewriting it to 2027.
Any questions? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve the Local Control Accountability Plan and Budget Overview for Parents.
So move?
Second.
Great, so it's been moved and seconded to approve the 2024-25 Local Control Accountability Plan and Budget Overview for Parents. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to 12B, 2024-25 Final Adoption Budget.
So similar to the LCAP, this was presented and there were no changes. And the state did adopt their budget, and it doesn't look like there's gonna be any major changes. That's good news.
Looks positive. Looks positive.
Any questions from trustees? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve the budget as presented.
I move approval.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the 2024-25 Final Adoption Budget. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to 12C, Local Control Accountability Plan, Every Student Succeeds Act, Federal Addendum.
Okay, so we submit this as well. We ask for your approval. Essentially, this is covering the federal dollars that are in support of our goals and actions within our Local Control Accountability Plan.
Any questions from trustees? Otherwise, I will also entertain a motion to adopt.
Move approval.
There's been a motion. Is there a second? Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the Local Control and Accountability Plan, Every Student Succeeds Act, Federal Addendum. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to item D, Consolidated Application.
And again, this is, the consolidated application is what we need to submit annually. It's an application for our federally funded programs. So titles one, two, three, and four. So we ask that you approve this application.
Great, again, if there's any questions, now's a good time. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve the consolidated application as presented.
So move?
Second.
Great, so it's been moved and seconded to approve the consolidated application as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to item E, Board of Education Meeting Dates for the 2024-2025 School Year.
Yes, what's presented for you are, again, the official regular board meeting schedule for the 24-25 school year, indicating, again, that there are no meetings in July of 2025. But the meetings are before you, and we're looking for your approval.
Great, so again, if there's any questions, now's a good time. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve the board meeting dates.
I move approval.
Second.
Great, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the Board of Education Meeting Dates for the 2024-2025 School Year. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. And the motion passes. The next few items are all concerning the adoption of instructional materials. I'm wondering if we want to kind of talk about them all together and then approve them as a whole?
Sounds good. I'm just, so the B or F, G, H, and I, those are just updating science texts for our high school electives. The one at the bottom is a new curriculum sociology that is going to be piloting at Antioch High School. All the others are being updated. And this is all done through our Curriculum Council Advisory Group. And they go through their process, and they are all state-approved texts. So they're here for you this evening for approval.
Any questions on any item F through J? Yes, Trustee Lathan.
For the adoption of instructional materials, can you share the process to engage parents and community? I'm just looking at the board policy in terms of the, the participation of parents, guardians, teachers, interested community members in bargaining?
Yes, so it starts with a review of the state-approved materials through the Curriculum Advisory Council. And then teachers are invited in, as well as students and parents, to come in and review, preview, give feedback, and so forth. And then a committee makes a selection after reviewing the materials. And they are ensuring high engagement features for students, strong teacher supports, and auxiliary resources, resources, and adaptations for special populations with specific attention to English learners and students that are in special education, culturally responsive to the greatest degree possible and aligned to standards, and then digital resources, what's available within those curriculums. And that's what they utilize to make the determination.
So just to clarify, a part of that committee includes parents who are not employees of the district?
Correct.
Okay.
They're required to be put on display.
And how do we let the community know that we are invest, that we are looking at new curriculum outside of the committee? Or is that something that hasn't been a practice?
For the community and parents?
Yes.
Announcements are made.
Okay, so anybody can come and review?
And there's like a time and a schedule and where to go.
Okay. I know for the ethnic studies curriculum, which is not here, the board has to actually review and approve. And so I didn't see anywhere in our board policy where the board has to review it. So I can understand why you may not have shared it with us. But in the future, it would be nice if you included the board?
We don't have a boxed curriculum. And so it is still being developed, developed by the teachers that have been on the committee in partnership with the UC Berkeley history.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about, I was comparing this to you, to the ethnic studies. Meaning ethnic studies, you have to show us the actual curriculum.
Correct.
And for these, our board policy does not say that you have to show us a curriculum, but we're supposed to just approve it or not approve it. I'm not comfortable with that. And so I would like in the future, and we'll probably need to update or have a conversation about what this board policy looks like. But even if it's not there, I'm just telling you, as a board member, I would like to be, at least show me what the, what we would be approving, because I feel like I'm doing it blindly. I have no clue what I'm approving in terms of curriculum for our students.
Okay.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve items F through J.
I asked to separate the curriculum part out.
Which item is that?
F through J. Are we, am I in the wrong place?
No, you're in the right place. But are you asking for voting on each of these items individually?
F through J altogether, because I don't know what I'm voting on, so I don't feel comfortable.
So you, we want to vote on them individually?
Yes, or in a group, F through J.
Yes, that, that's exactly what I said, yeah. It entertained a motion to approve items F through J.
Yes.
Yes.
I move approval for F through J.
A second.
Great, so there's a motion and a second to approve items F through J. All in favor say aye.
Individual vote is what I'm asking for.
Oh, a roll call vote.
Roll call.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Trustee Hag?
Yes.
Trustee Lathan?
Abstain.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Rocha?
Yes.
President Hernandez?
Yes. All right, so items F through J are approved with four in favor and one abstention. Moving on to 13, Items for Information, Discussion, and Action by Board. There are none. 14 Resolutions for First Reading. There are none. 15 Resolutions for Immediate Action. We have item A, Resolution Number 2023-2449 Designating Certain General Funds As Committed Fund Balance.
Yes, and this is as part of the budget adoption. And it's required for us to show the ending fund allowance and the components of the ending fund balance, which was presented in the budget last week.
Great, unless there's any questions, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Approve Resolution A.
Yeah.
Second.
All right, so there's been a motion and second to approve Resolution Number 2023-2449 Designing Certain General Funds As Committed Fund Balance. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to 15B, Resolution Number 2023-2453 To Designate Proprietary Specifications For Baltimore Air Coil Company Coding Cooling Tower Units and Related Equipment.
Yes, this is to designate it for the cooling tower replacement at Deer Valley High School. We're required to have this specific type of cooling system based on what's already currently there. And so we're preparing for that project that is hopefully going to be done later this year. And so we're preparing for that project that is hopefully going to be done later this year.
So if there's not any questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I move approval.
Second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 2023-2453, to designate proprietary specifications for Baltimore Air Coil Company cooling tower units and related equipment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Moving on to 15C, Resolution Requesting the Board of Supervisors of Contra Costa County to Establish a Tax Rate for Bonds of the Antioch Unified School District.
Yes, and this resolution will allow the district to sell bonds in the 24-25 fiscal year. So we have to inform the county, but by July 1st, if we intend to do that, so they can add it to the tax rolls.
Great, so again, if there's not any questions, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
Move approval.
Second.
Great, so it's properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 2023-2454, Requesting the Board of Supervisors of Contra Costa County to Establish a Tax Rate for Bonds of Antioch Unified School District. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Moving on to Item D, Resolution on Education Protection Account for Fiscal Year 2024-25.
Again, that resolution, that's part of the budget adoption, that is part of our funding that comes through the LCFF, the Education Protection Act out of Prop 30. Just a requirement for us to receive those funds.
Great, again, if there's any questions, otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve, adopt the resolution.
Move approval.
Second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 2023-2455, Education Protection Account for Fiscal Year 2024-25. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Moving on to E, Resolution Authorizing Instructors to Teach Outside of Credential Authorization for the 2024-25 School Year.
Yes, good evening, Board. So this is a similar request that comes to you quite often. The request is for the board to authorize teachers to teach outside of their credentialed area as relevant under California Ed Code. Obviously, Human Resources works diligently to align teachers to their credentialed area of study and of teaching, but there are certain credentials that do not exist. So we're requesting approval for the teachers listed to teach next year under the applicable California Ed Code. In this case, the teacher is teaching independent study for the 24-25 school year.
Great, so unless there's any questions by trustees, I will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
I move approval.
Second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2023-2456, Authorizing Instructors to Teach Outside of Credential Authorization for the 2024-25 School Year. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Moving on to 15F, Resolution Number 2023-2457, Censure of Board President Antonio Hernandez. So I don't know if Vice President Rocha, you want to introduce this piece, or if you have staff designated to introduce this piece?
We have in our packet, actually, the written items, and they go according to the codes that we're under. I'm sorry to have to bring this up, but under the circumstances, we've been a little bit of a, not kind of working together, shall I say, and I just felt that there was a need for us to review what was going on. And so I brought it to your attention and to the board's attention, and of course, I'm asking for them to either consider voting for a yes or a no. And so I don't know if you want, there's about six pages here, so I could read the first part of it if that's what's needed.
I think-
I'm not sure how you want to handle it.
I think we'll be okay. You want to move to public comments, and then afterwards, we'll have board discussion?
Sure.
Great, so first public comment we have is Frank Sterling.
Hello, everyone. Yeah, I'm sad that you have to do this too. I don't think this is really necessary. Somebody that brought up bullying by employers, bosses at work, that's something that we want to deal with and take seriously. I watched from home as people that were the victims of that bullying came up here and spoke and said it wasn't a joke to them. And you're all trying to censor the guy that brought this forward to move on? I think the, what we're learning here with our city, that when we spoke out about the police and their bullying, we can call it, to use a light term, but their violence against our community. And it's not far removed from me, that, I don't know who the superintendent is around here, but the, somebody here is married to Alan Contanda, who was the police chief when I was attacked and beaten by the police, and he did nothing about the bullying that happened to me. I got kicked in the face, choked unconscious, beat with flashlights, and called some derogatory names. They did nothing about it, and that's what you're all about to do. So I advise you not to do this, to take the bullying seriously, and also denounce any support of the APOA, because I know some of us up here, Mary, including you, have endorsements from the APOA, a racist, hateful, violent, homophobic organization here in town. So I don't know if people have gotten money behind those endorsements, or have denounced them, or the Antioch Backs the Blue Racist Facebook page. I do know that Councilmember Barbannica did publicly denounce that group, and so don't do the same mistake what you did with the police here to the school board. So let's just drop this item while you still can. Maybe you could just forget about it tonight, and let's take this kind of action to the bullies. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Patricia Granados.
Greetings, everyone. Congratulations on getting through another school year and your leadership. I am so sorry that you're going through round two of censuring, because the first time you motioned Mary Rocha to censor someone was a local activist, community advocate for the kids, for Black Lives, for social equality and justice, and you voted to remove her at one point, censure her at one point, and it's just sad and embarrassing, but I'm not surprised that we're doing this again, because as another community member here stated, that that racist, hateful behavior and culture also permeates the school district, and I hope that there will be accountability eventually with some federal oversight. I'm very disappointed, and as a Latina, my family used to vote for you. I thought, oh, Rocha, but I learned you're not for the people. Maybe at some point, and thank you for your time and service in the very beginning, but over time, greed permeates positions of power, and here you are trying to protect your people that have gotten away with atrocities in our community. So I invite our community to chant with me if you all decide to vote on this. The community is watching, the Bay Area is watching, and I'll make sure that our nation knows of the corruption and the racism that exists here. My family is Hispanic, Latina. I'm embarrassed for our community because you are a back-to-blue, back-to-blue Police Officers Association, racist, corrupt, disgusting behaviors and violations that happen in our community. Have you done any outreach to those families that were targeted, that were traumatized? The families whose homes were tormented and torn apart? Do you know about that? I invite the community to chant with me if we continue to try to censure another leader that's trying to hold accountability and raise this school to higher standards, and that's what our students deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gavin Payton.
Good evening, School Board. I have a couple of questions. So question one, when we talk about bullying, how are we going to perceive that? Because when you're looking at the youth perspective, and when you're coming from a youth perspective, especially one that's an African-American student that has disabilities, that also is a representative of the LGBTQ community and an African-American, and gets constantly bullied because of the color of their skin, of who they pursue, and what they do. It is not only fair, but it's unjust. And it's kind of ironic that we have, you all is all here together, but when we needed you in that special meeting, the staff walked out. I was here with the youth council. That was not only embarrassing for the city of Antioch, but it was embarrassing across Contra Costa County and as a nation, because at the end of the day, we have the choice to vote. We rock the vote. The people in this room that you're promised to serve and protect, we rock the vote. If you guys make this decision, this will highly affect the voters. And we need unity and justice. You guys say you want to be champions for youth, prove yourself right now in this moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Kimberly Payton.
Good evening. I guess I'm going to echo some of the other sentiments to say, congratulations on finishing a school year, but I have to say, I'm really disappointed that this is even up for a discussion. I'm disappointed that Black and Brown students continually fail and don't achieve in this district. I'm disappointed that there is a member of the Black and Brown community leading the charge to get, to censure another Black and Brown person that has been doing the work, that has been in the community, that has been talking to parents, that has been supporting staff, that has called special meetings to try to work things out, to try to bring to light things that weren't working. Instead, the rest of the group decided to continually give raises to a superintendent who's never been examined. Where's her, where's her yearly observation? How is she still getting raises? She's leading the charge over the staff that's doing the bullying. You're leading the charge over her. What the heck? Isn't your job, according to the school, according to the superintendent, to work with the superintendent to approve education for all? I encourage you tonight to stop this craziness and get to the matter at hand in promoting the scholars of this district. As a matter of fact, I encourage all of you to stop right now calling this, the youth of this school district, students, and start calling them scholars. Start uplifting them. Start uplifting the teachers that are actually doing the work, because this right here, this is just, I can't say it, but this is a crap show.
Thank you. Next, we have Mary Lutz.
Hi, I'm Mary Lutz. I'm a parent of children here in the Antioch Unified School District. We've been in the district for 10 years. In those 10 years, I've seen three people of color, not three people of color, but three people censored by the board. Two people on the board are still here. And those are typically the people that I'm voting for, the people that are trying to change, because we have a superintendent that is not making the numbers, it's not making change to make those numbers improve, and I'm not hearing anything except for, from Antonio Hernandez and Dr. Jag, making any kind of improvement to help students improve their grades, whether they're of color or not. They are the ones that I see working for the kids. And I did come to the meeting where we were going to talk about Stephanie Anello, and he was driving through the parking lot. You guys didn't show up at all, and to me, that seems like, like a gang that's bullying up on other people, when you should have been here to have the discussion. I mean, in order to have a census, even if you guys teamed together, you should have been here. The people should have still had the opportunity to hear, discuss, and decide for ourselves what was going on. And we did have a meeting. It was public. I'm a parent. I was here. I'm not on anybody's team. I don't have an agenda. And I was happy to hear something, because you're not transparent. My kids are there. My kids need to have transparency. I need to know what's going on. And there are two people on this board, two of them, that tell me anything. And I just want you to know that I love my kids. I'm going to be the first one to walk in the office every single morning to make sure that my kid is getting what he deserves, whether it's good or bad. I also think that when you're presenting the assignment or the new topic, sociology should have come a long time ago, because these are the adults, and this is what we're doing right now. We're learning sociology firsthand, and these kids are going to be adults next year. My son votes. And I'm hoping you guys all know that the people that you're hurting are the students. Those are also the people that are voting very soon.
Thank you. Next, we have Daniel Hernandez.
Okay, so I'm not a very great speaker. Obviously, a lot of people here have made great points. I cannot speak on the district, because I have to watch my tongue. I will speak about my brother. Start with a quote. Antonio graduated first class of Dos Liby, Youth of the Year, accepted to Stanford and many other retrograde colleges like Cornell, UCLA, I can, it's a lot. Graduated with an economics degree. Got accepted to medical schools. He got accepted to Mayo Clinic and UC Davis. He chose to stay here, attend UC Davis, so he could better this community. He's been making sacrifices. I've seen him commute back and forth, cost him money, cost him time, relationship time with people. And this, this hurts. It hurts because I heard the name Rocha growing up, and I thought, oh, look, it's a Latino, Latina. She stands for the people. Why would you do this? I don't even think you know what's in that resolution. You don't know how much that hurts, what you put on there. But I regress, and I'll say once again, he's done many great things. He got accepted to Stanford once again, to better himself. Gained two master degrees. And once again, commuting back and forth. To me, it was no surprise he defeated an incumbent who was the board president, was here a long time, not because he's Latino, but because he is committed, he is dedicated, and he wants to do right by this community. We all should be trying to do that. I am saddened that it does not feel that way. It just feels like we want to keep going with what we have, because we don't want to change. We don't want that hard work. My brother stands for his morals and his values. He continued to do that. So once again, I'll just, I'll leave you with the translation of the quote. That quote is, "They tried to bury us, but they didn't know we were seeds, and that's what my brother is, and that's what we all hope to be. We might not see the change right now, but we want to start that change, and he has started this change today, and we keep going."
Thank you. Next, we have Beatrice Hernandez.
Hi, everyone. I'm here to strongly oppose the resolution to censure our board president, Antonio Hernandez. It is simply unfair and unwarranted. It deeply concerns- It deeply concerns me that such a resolution is being considered when our president has consistently acted with the best interests of our schools and communities. Throughout his tenure, President Hernandez has tirelessly worked to protect the well-being of our staff, students, and all members of this community. His decision has been rooted in a genuine desire to improve the direction of our district, striving for a better future for all. To censure him now would not only be unjust, but also send a discouraging message to those who are dedicated to positive change. It would undermine the trust and confidence we have placed in his leadership and deter others from taking bold steps toward progress. I also think it is worth pointing out how strange it is that Mari Rocha had originally asked for items calling for both President Hernandez's censure and removal as board president, but only the censure has ended up on the agenda. For a matter that was initially expressed with such urgency and with serious and ill-founded allegations against President Hernandez's character and leadership, to suddenly be deemed unnecessary raises significant doubt to the sincerity of her motives. Furthermore, the misinformed inclusion of HIPPA, a law that does not apply to schools or school districts, raises additional concerns and makes it clear that this resolution is nothing more than a disgusting attempt to ruin Hernandez's reputation, not only as a public official, but as a future medical professional. Instead of punishing him, we should be supporting his efforts to steer our district in a positive direction. He's trying to make real improvements, and that should be commended, not condemned. I urge the board to reconsider this misguided proposal and focus on what really matters, improving our schools for the benefit of everyone involved to build a stronger, more inclusive district for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Olga Smith.
I just want to echo everybody else's sentiments. I feel it very necessary that I openly express my dismay with this resolution. I find it very unfortunate that this is even something that we're discussing when we have third graders, two out of every 10 third graders in this school district are reading at grade level. Do you understand that? That's two out of 10. And we're here discussing the censorship of President Hernandez instead of talking about the academics of our children. And I just find it so horrific. I really do. Gary, you're my representative. I'm your constituent. I sent you an email. I hope you read it. I want you to be able to connect the face to who sent you that email. And I hope, in this moment, that you will function with complete diplomacy. The whole board, really, there's bigger fish to fry here. And we have a school district that we need to turn around, and we need everybody working together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Frances Green.
Good afternoon to the superintendent. This is my first time before you, but I'm very saddened to hear that you are trying to censure the president. And Mary, I'm very sad that you led this fight because I've been knowing you many years, was on your interview to get your first job. It's very sad and hurting to see how the students are doing. I spent my afternoon with one of your students this evening that's having a terrible time and how he's been treated in the district. You need to think about what you're doing because Black and Brown students are hurting. And I can't see you lead the way on something like this. I'm almost in tears to see you do this. You need to be ashamed of yourself. And the other board members here, I hope you don't go along with something like this because it's a discredit to the community and what you're for this board to do. And I hope you won't do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Devin Williams.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to tell you all a little something about today. I woke up at like 5:30 today. I just got home about an hour ago. I just ate for the first time today. My friend over here reminded me that I had to be here tonight. This is unacceptable. The fact that we are all out here working so hard, and this is not just about me, this is about our children, this is about our community members who work hard to live in Antioch and to see their children have a great, thriving school district, but it does not exist. And the fact that this whole bullying thing took place and the fact that you are now being censured, it's kind of ironic because you're fighting against bullying, but the fact that you spoke up, you've been bullied against now. You're one of the bullied people in our school district, unfortunately. I'm really sad that people that have been around this community for decades are not stepping up to support you and Dr. Jagg. But we all know that people have agendas, and they all want to uphold systems of oppression. That's what it seems like to me. You all ought to be ashamed of yourselves if you vote tonight for a censure on someone who stood up for this community and called people out for their misdoing and misbehavior. We are teaching our children that if you see something, you say something. What happened to that? What happened to accountability? It's simple. You guys are here representing children, and you're not acting like adults. So I urge you to stand up here or sit here, press the button, and push the right one, please. For the love of Christ, push the right button when you decide on this man's position tonight. And look at what can be the community if you guys do the right thing. This man is trying to change things. This woman is trying to change things. Why are y'all not allowing that to happen? We could all change Antioch School District around. We can get rid of people who are oppressing this education system. You guys are in your, come on. You've been on this board for so long, Mari Rocha, and you're going to do this to somebody who's young and up and coming behind you, trying to do the right thing? I'm sorry to talk to you like this. I respect my elders, but I can't respect this.
We can start with comments that people have. We can start with trustee Lewis.
You know, this is a tough situation. And so, you know, I think the comment was made earlier that HIPPA doesn't apply to education, and that is absolutely true. But there are sort of rules that govern how information is shared. And I'm a process guy. Anybody that knows me in any respect, any walk of my life, knows that I'm a process guy. And so, you know, I'll leave my comment there.
Thanks, President Rocha.
Okay. I was willing to bring this up. It's not an easy thing for me to do because I admire this man, and I don't care what you say. He has, wait a minute. He has, do you want me to speak or not? Do you want me to speak or not? Are you going to dabble or not?
Everybody, I do appreciate the chance, and I do think that they're so important. I think within this school district, we see how often there's a failure to take accountability and criticism. And I stand by everything that I've said. I stand by all of my actions, and I'm willing to hear out what they have to say. And I think we should give them that space to make whatever accusations they want to make. But I do deeply appreciate it.
As I was saying, I respect this individual as a future, and I see it. But we do have rules, policies that we follow. And this is the issue that I'm dealing with. It took me a while to figure out if I had the guts to come up here and let you know because I knew what the outcome was going to be. But look, I'm going to read this, and I have a right to read this. So I'm going to go ahead and read. Whereas Board President Hernandez sought to evaluate the superintendent in public forum outside the closed session arena in violation of policy 2140, whereas Board President Hernandez used his public Facebook account to post confidential correspondence from a district paid for legal counsel, breaking the confidentiality of a documented posted and posting confidential correspondence to the Board of Trustees, which directed to a closed session item in violation of Board Policy 209012. And whereas Board President Hernandez attempted to schedule two special board meetings, were also being told that there would not be a quorum for the meeting. And whereas Board President actually commandeered the boardroom to hold an unsanctioned meeting with members of the public, placing members of the administration in potential jeopardy of violating California Open Meeting Law, the Brown Act. And whereas Board President Hernandez surraped the authority of the board by appearing to speak in behalf of the Board of Trustees and media news report via his Facebook posts and public media in violation of Board Bylaw Policy 90109012. Whereas Board President Hernandez failed to implement Board Bylaw 9121 when a local media reporter verbally attacked the superintendent during a governing board meeting. Whereas governing board finally finds a determination that Board President Hernandez's conduct is unacceptable, unprofessional, in violation of the Board Bylaws and state laws cited above. And that is the example, and this is only one of seven pages. One of seven pages. And that is the reason I brought it forward. I admire who he is. I admire what he's trying to do. But we have rules and policies that we have to follow. And if we don't, then there's chaos. There's no reason to do anything.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Next, we'll hear from trustee Hack.
Okay. I think there's only one word. It's called process. Seriously, that's an important word because we have books, and we have rules, and we have things to go by. And this whole situation sort of went off the rails because the process was not...
Because your friends are abusing...
Excuse me.
I appreciate it, but let's please let, yeah, everyone get out their comments.
All I'm trying to say is, there are very different ways of looking at issues. And some are right, and some are wrong. That depends on your point of view. My concern initially, and I'm not saying where I stand on this, what I'm saying to you is, the process is important. And the initial process was violated and ignored, and it's gone on.
Thank you, everyone. Trustee Hack, is that all your comments?
I have no choice because I always got nothing to talk.
All right. Next, we'll move on to trustee Lathan.
I am really disappointed. And while I, process is huge for me as well. And I also understand that process sometimes means you're kind of reenacting systems of oppression and white supremacy. And so, I'm not sure which process you're referring to, trustee Rocha. But it feels like, from what our duties are as electeds, President Hernandez did the exact same thing that needed to happen, which was be public about public issues. As electeds, we are not, besides a closed session when something is confidential, we are not to do business in private and behind closed doors. Additionally, emails from board members, emails are public information in our position. I appreciate the work that you've done, President Hernandez. And I think about Mr. Willie Minns, who recently passed away and who was a member of the NAACP chapter for East County in his boldness in standing up during times when folks would not. And I see you doing that a lot. And there are other examples of folks. And I know we're electeds, but we have been elected to do the work of the people. And when you think about process, I want us to think about being consistent as well if you're saying this is about process. Because we tend to follow processes that the majority wants, and then when you don't want to follow other processes, you don't. And so, I'm really concerned. I also don't want to portray to our students that when they speak up for something, someone is going to censor them. And that's what we're modeling right now. It all started because our employees have shared that they felt bullied. That's how it started. And we're ending now with, now you need to be quiet so we don't say anything. And I understand there's the process of, you know, going through an investigation and all of that. But when an investigation tells us that it was a prank and not bullying, and we know what we saw with our eyes, and we know what we heard with our ears because our employees told us, and we still are moving on like nothing happened, that's unacceptable. And it is our job to tell the truth, to make sure that we support our employees and students and listen to our community. I'm sorry that this is happening, but I know in a few years, you'll look back, just like I'm sure Mr. Minns did, Cesar Chavez, John Lewis, who looked back and said, you know what? We did the right thing.
So I think before I read my comments, I'd have to clarify in quite, who wrote this resolution?
All you have to do is pick up the information from the book and all the things that you said. You cover up all the items that we have in the policies.
Who wrote this resolution?
Yeah. Answer the question.
I had help in getting it written. How's that?
And did this cost our district money?
No.
Great. I just wanted to clarify that piece. I think it's important to remember that this is absolutely so far beyond me. This is about the direction of our school district and what we want for our students, what we want for our community, and what we want for our employees. I think we also know that this is absolutely in malice and sloppy, quite frankly. You know, I'll go through a few examples that have already been called out. In the resolution, it states, whereas Board President Hernandez failed to implement Board Bylaw 9121 when a local media reporter verbally attacked the superintendent during a governing board meeting. In Board Policy 9121, the area that that's being referred to is there's a section that says, be responsible for the orderly conduct of all board meetings, which references Board Policy 9323, of which 7C explicitly says, "The board shall not prohibit public criticism of district employees." We've already heard about the inclusion of violating the Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act, of which in the resolution, it lists this as the HIPP-A act instead of the HIPP-A act, as it actually is named, showing just a clear misunderstanding of this process that they so claim to covet. And then, lastly, I want to be clear about when the community came here and we had that community meeting, this is a public school district. This is the public's school district. This is the public's building. You all have every right to use these resources. That's what your tax dollars fund. That's what your votes fund. And to have the district tell you, you can't use the spaces that you pay for, that you ensure that students have access to, is missing the point. We heard the word process, and I'm going to make it very clear. I am not a process person. I am a people person. We created processes to protect people, not people to protect processes, as we see happening. And that's what brings us back to what this is all about. This is about changing those processes, changing the things that we clearly see are failing our community, are failing our employees, and failing our students. This is the process meant to keep us exactly the way that we are. And if we allow this to happen, then it's implementing that same status quo, and we cannot stand for that. And that's all I have to say.
No justice.
No peace.
No justice.
No peace.
No justice.
No peace.
No justice.
No peace.
Hey, hey, ho, ho. Mary Rocha has got to go.
Hey, hey, ho, ho. Mary Rocha has got to go. Hey, hey, ho, ho. Mary Rocha has got to go.
Thank, again, appreciate the chance, and again, want to make sure that this focus is on the leadership of this school district and creating a better school district. So at this time, I will do a motion to table this item indefinitely.
I call for their point of, no, I call for the motion.
Okay. So there is a motion, so there is a motion to call the question, and that does take parliamentary order precedent. So we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote to call the question, which is a proper parliamentary procedure.
Hey, hey. Trustee Hack?
Oh, supremacy has got to go.
Please, we'll, we'll go ahead and go through the process.
Trustee Hack?
Same thing you said earlier, abstain.
Trustee Lathan?
Can you clarify what we're voting on?
The motion is to call the question. It's a non-debatable motion that gets us to vote on an item immediately.
I need clarification.
Yeah, so trustee Rocha is calling the question, which is to adopt this resolution.
To take the vote.
To take the vote and stop all discussion.
So the vote is whether or not we want to move forward with voting for this?
Yes.
Okay. No?
Trustee Lewis?
I'll second Gary. I'll abstain.
Vice President Rocha?
Yes.
President Hernandez?
No. And also just for clarity, again, people that claim to be, oh, let me call this. So the motion fails with one yes, two abstain, one no, two, two no's and two abstentions, sorry. And just again, call the question actually requires two thirds vote, so four of us would have had to say that. So again, the motion before us is to table this item. Is there a second?
Table the item or not, or just eliminate it altogether?
Table this, or I guess? Tableing the item indefinitely kind of eliminates it unless it needs to be brought back, which, yeah. So that's typically the proper process to eliminate an item is to table indefinitely, which is the motion I'm putting. There's already a motion to table that I put forward. I'm waiting for a second. Do you want to second that?
Second.
Great. So it's been properly moved and seconded. Let's go ahead and do a roll call vote to table this item indefinitely.
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Lathan?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Rocha?
No.
President Hernandez?
Yes. So the motion passes for one to table this motion indefinitely. All right, moving on to item 15G, Resolution 20232458, authorizing provisional internship permits.
Yes, this resolution, as is common, like we had last board meeting, is requesting the board to approve certificated individuals to work under provisional internship permits for the 24, 25 school year. As you're aware, this type of permit is granted through the California Teaching Commission and is used for certificated employees as they work on an internship credential.
Great. Unless there's any questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Move approval.
I'll second it.
Great. So it's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 20232457, oh, wait, 202458, authorizing provisional internship permit. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Moving on to 16, Resolutions for Second Reading and Action, there are none. Seventeen Board Policies for First Reading, there are none. Eighteen Board Policies for Second Reading and Action, there are none. Nineteen Information Items for General Information, we have one item, A, Quarterly Report on Williams Uniform Complaints.
All right. We are required to submit to the county office our report on Williams complaints. We had none for the period of April through June 2024, just for your information.
Great. Moving on to 20, Future Agenda Items from Board Members. We'll start with trustee Hack.
Uh, no, none.
Great. Trustee Lathan?
The same thing in terms of exit interviews. I thought today there was going to be a presentation on the data from the exit interviews that are survey-based. And so I'm just, I want to make sure we get that on the agenda so we can hear this presentation and get the results.
Vice President Rocha?
None.
Trustee Lewis?
Nothing. Well, actually, just...
The service?
Yes. So I know that we've had board updates around the JROTC, and I know that the last board update, I believe that I read, stated that there was going to be sort of a follow-up with them to see where they are because they had to sort of, I don't know, make space, or I can't remember the exact language. So if we can get an update on that. Friday board is fine.
Next, we'll move on to item 21, Additional Comments to Exceed the First 30-Minute Session Limit. We have none. Moving on to 22, Reports and Comments from Board Members. Item A, we'll start off with trustee Lewis.
Yeah, so for the last couple, I'm still a little bit jet lagged. I was in, I went to Japan. I was, I don't know, can't remember when I went, but I was there for two weeks. And that's kind of why I missed the last board meeting. And so while I was there, I visited a couple of schools and, you know, looked at the education system there. So, you know, I'll be working with some of the principals. I've been in contact with a few of them and teachers that I've been in contact with a few of them to see about different ways that we could sort of either engage or otherwise, well, yeah, engage with some of the students over in, in Japan. So, yeah.
We have a group coming.
We have a group coming from Chichibu.
Coming up on the August.
And so for those who don't know, thank you for that reminder. We have a sister city in Japan. It's the city of Chichibu. And in that, with that sister city organization, we bring people here one year, and then the next year we go there. And we are, I think they're still looking for host families. And they have different activities in the community. And it's celebrating sort of the, the interrelationship of different cultures. And for people who may not know, my wife is Japanese. I lived there for six years. And so I have a very close relationship with the Japanese community. Obviously, I'm an African-American male, so obviously we have those conversations. And so we celebrate through dinner and, I'm sorry, through food and, you know, cultural sharing and things like that, both in our household as well in the community. So some of the stuff that we've been up to.
They might come to visit. I mean, I don't know if we have a, during that time, if we have a meeting because it's in August. I'm not sure. But we'll have to check that out.
Great. Vice President Rocha, any other comments?
Oh, excuse me. I thank you for the report on the graduating classes and the different ones that have gone on, and we have a good number. So I'm happy to say that we are succeeding.
Trustee Lathan?
I do not have anything today.
Trustee Hack?
I'm just glad graduations are over. That's it.
Great. And then lastly, you know, I think I'll just share the, the book that I have today. It is one of my favorite books. It's a very, I think it's like its 50th anniversary, Corduroy by Don Freeman. And my actual, my first interaction with this book was actually in Spanish. I didn't even know this book was in English because this was one of the, the few books that we had growing up that I remember that my mom would take the time to read to us. And it's, it's such a beautiful book about a bear who's missing a button and trying to find that button so they can improve themselves and be such a perfect match for a girl who spent, who, you know, gathers up all the money that she can to be able to afford this bear, and she ultimately gives him his little button. And I think, you know, you can see the, the value, or I can see the values that I gained from reading this book in how I think, just like Corduroy, I think our school district can be so improved, and we can find little buttons, and we can work together and continue to make things so much better. And I remember growing up, we couldn't afford too much, but, you know, after reading like Corduroy and I got, I've always been fascinated by teddy bears, and this was the very first teddy bear I've ever had. My dad bought it for me at Food for Less. And I'm not even like a baseball, it's from the Tampa Bay. It's like a Jose Conseco 33 bear, but I didn't care about that. I just cared that it was, it was a bear. And so, yeah, I think I'm just so, I know that today we were, many of you came here to express such nice things about me, about Dr. Jag, about the things going on. I know my, my siblings came here and said such nice things. And it just, you know, been reflecting on, that means a lot to me. But again, let's not lose focus on all the other kids because I, I just know that there's other kids out there reading their favorite book right now with their mom and dad that are, you know, have their toy that's getting them through school. I brought this to school like a number of days when I was in kindergarten and elementary school to show off to my friends because I thought it was the coolest thing I had. And I still think it's one of the coolest things that I have. And so, you know, those are the people, those students, those people that have, are going through those experiences where they're finding joy in the spaces where maybe they're part of families that don't have a ton of money, that don't have a ton of resources, and that's who we're protecting. That's who we're trying to work for. That's what it means when we're being better for, when I, when I fight so hard for us to, to try to be better. It's not to criticize. It's not to penalize anyone. It's because our students deserve the best and our city deserves the absolute best. So with that, we'll move on. Yeah, go ahead, trustee Lathan.
I thought about two things. One, I was approved, accepted into the Water Education for Latino Leaders or WELL Fellowship, and I'm not Latina. However, this is for folks who serve the Latino community and who just want to learn the importance of water policy and all of that. So I'm super excited about that. Quite a few of our electeds in our city have gone through that, including President Hernandez. And I just hear amazing things about the fellowships. I'm super excited. It's for electeds. And then lastly, I'll be presenting at the MTSS Conference. I'm still an educator. MTSS is multi-tiered system of support. So I'll be doing a presentation at that conference in Anaheim in July as well on leading teams through transformational change, which is one of my jams. So super excited about that. And whatever I learn, I like to bring back and think about it from the perspective of a board member and how I can help kind of move the district forward with transforming learning for students.
Great. And with that, we'll move on to future meetings. So we just approved the calendar. Our next one is August 7th. So we do not have any meetings in July. And then moving on to 24, Adjournment, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move approval.
I second.
Great. So it's been properly moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes.